Called a meeting to order. I invite you to join me in the invocation. Dear Lord, you have shown us to respect and love others in our actions and decisions. Let us follow your direction in leading our community in this time of change. Help us to realize the impact of our decision. Show us compassion for those less fortunate. Lord, we ask for your love and safety for our children and families this summer at home and in their travels. Protect our employees and keep them safe while doing difficult jobs. Lord, we trust in you and ask your blessings for all that are here and us to thy service. Amen.
Second item on general's approval of minutes. Consider approval of the May 15th regular session and May 15th closed session minutes.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Tonight, we have three public hearings. The first is a public hearing to consider a conditional use permit. It's number 17003 for property located at 636 North Carolina Highway 2427. In just a minute, I will ask staff to introduce it. But first, I need to ask, do you have the Bible, Ms. Bowers? Okay. First, I ask anyone who cares to speak for or against in this conditional use permit, come up and be sworn. Staff, if you'll be sworn, if there's no one else.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Put your left hand on the Bible and raise your right, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you about to give be the truth so help you God?
I do.
Okay. Kevin, which one of the members of staff are going to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much else to add. Honestly, as you mentioned, this is a conditional use permit application for a, what we're terming now in the city as adult gaming establishment. Also considered a skills game arcade by the applicant's record at suite 24 of, at 636 Highway 2427 bypass east. You will see in your application there, you'll see the application from the applicant there, including the criteria for consideration during the hearing. And then, staff has also, at council's request from the last CUP hearing that we had, has put together a sheet, kind of a guideline sheet, to follow when doing quasi-judicial hearings. Be my recommendation that council try to kind of go by this. We did try to keep this in chronological order, order that the meeting should go through. And so that should just help be along with it a little bit there. Just to, I'm sure it will come up, we'll go ahead and mention it. We did pass an ordinance on adult gaming establishments, I think, last month. This application had come in right before, had been received right before that ordinance was passed, so that's why they're here for consideration for CUP tonight.
Okay.
Where is 636?
This is the Severa property. It's the back property over, it's where CC's and Ingles are, back there, that shopping center.
It will be in that shopping center?
In that shopping center, yeah. I don't know exactly which one that unit is on there, but yeah.
Before we get started, just a point of clarification. I think in your verbal opening remarks, you gave a physical address and you gave a certain suite number.
Yeah, what the applicant has is suite 24, I believe. Yeah. East, suite 24. That's what's listed.
When that applicant comes up, we'll clarify where that's at.
Okay.
I'm just looking at what the paper application says does not meet what that verbal introduction would say. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Who is representing the applicant? If you will, come up, please, name, state your name and address, please.
I'm Jim Barnes of Oyston Barnes &amp; Associates in Raleigh, North Carolina, and I represent the owner of the business, Marty, Martin Larson. And Mr. Larson, unfortunately, is out of state, but his assistant, Robert Alred, is also here this evening, if there's any questions that I can't answer.
If you will, first, just summarize, tell us what you're wanting to do and where you want to do it. Where exactly in the shopping center is the building? And any other information you can give us?
Yes, thank you for having us here, first of all. This is, this is very similar to the business that you heard in April, Mr. Chan's business. I think that was conditional use permit 001 of this year. But this is a similar business, is a skill-type business. It is, as y'all noted back in April, it has replaced what used to be known as a sweepstakes industry. And it is currently, and has it, and it has been ongoing litigated in this state and all the way up to the North Carolina Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court. Currently, I think we referenced, there was some action in Alamance County. Since you last met, there was an injunction in Alamance County that stayed and actually allowed businesses across the state of North Carolina remain open, and actually opened additional ones for this provider. It's crazy overstock is the plaintiff in that case. And so, they are basically enjoined and allowed to continue operating at this point for that business. And it uses a similar skills-based gaming system. So, we're constantly monitoring what the court system is doing on this, just as y'all will be too, and probably revisiting this, hopefully again in six months to see where we stand. As for the business itself, I think it was listed in the application, and I have it as suite 21. I don't know if that's what the application you have.
Can you explain where that is in the shopping center? What it's next to, maybe?
Well, I cannot to be, I am going to be perfectly, I do not know what the location of the, I know there's a CC's Pizza as the town is represented, and Mr. Alred, do you know, and do you want him to?
Yes, please, sir, if he's going to speak. Left hand on the Bible and raise your right, please, sir. Do you swear the testimony you about to give to be the truth and whole truth, not but truth, so help you God? Thank you. If you will, tell us your name and address, too, sir.
Robert Alred, 933 Broadway Road, Sanford, North Carolina. I'm sorry, I don't hear real well, so.
Where exactly in the shopping center are you looking?
The Ingles Shopping Center over here on 2427.
And which suite?
On 2427 east.
Right, I know where you're talking about, in the shopping center.
Right in the corner, right beside, yes, sir, right beside the nail salon, I believe it is.
Right.
We had one place there before we actually started in February or January, trying to work it out. And they have moved us next door, which I think is right in the corner. The lady actually gave us that one, it's because she, they wanted one, it's a little bigger than the one that we originally had.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Who wants to answer? I want to go through the findings and facts, because I need a little bit more detail than just yes and no answers. I want you to explain those to me. Who wants to do that?
We could probably do it together, if that's acceptable.
The first finding of fact, the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if load carried were proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and provided.
It will not.
And explain to me why not.
Well, it's, my client, Mr. Larson, has been doing this type of business for quite a while. He's done it all over the state of North Carolina, many counties. And I know personally, as a matter of fact, that he typically always, and he does always, not typically, but he retains me to go to local district attorneys, to law enforcement, to zoning offices, to work with them, first and foremost, before he just tries to open up shop in the dark of night and start operating. He's very respectful of the law and wants to follow the letter of the law. And so, if it was something that was a nuisance, or a distraction, or a problem to the community, we would want to be the first ones to know and want to address that and take care of it or, and deal with it.
Okay. The second one is, the use meets all required conditions and specifications.
It does. It's according to the way it's zoned and from my dealings with the town, I believe it does, yes, sir.
Have you discussed the restrictions or requirements that we put on the other conditional use? And you're agreeable with those same restrictions on this one?
From the April restrictions that we discussed, I have reviewed those and talked to my client about those, yes, and we're agreeable.
The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use will be a public necessity.
It will not disturb any buildings around it, or, and what was, could you restate that, please?
That the use be a public necessity.
Oh, that the use is a public necessity?
Yeah. Let me read it all to you again. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or alternatively, that the use be a public necessity.
It will absolutely not affect the buildings next to it, no.
And will be a controlled situation, there'll be somebody there to control it?
At all times.
Okay. And four, the proposed use is in harmony with adjacent uses in terms of location, scale, site design, hours of operation, and operating characteristics.
It is, yes, it will be.
And your hours will be?
The same as we discussed before, from, what was it, 10:00 a.m. to midnight, Monday through Saturday, and 1:00 p.m. to midnight on Sundays.
Okay. Council, any questions that you have of this gentleman about those four findings of fact?
I'm still, I'm still a little bit distraught about not being able to determine the exact location. I'm about, what does that paperwork say? And not, either of the three answers do I get say the same thing. Okay? Is it 21, is it 24, is it 30? I know the vicinity of this, I know the area, but I can't pinpoint based on what you're saying. And it doesn't appear to me that anybody really knows the suite number of that particular area.
I'd be more than happy to clarify that. And it may have changed, as we've addressed, and it may never have been supplemented in our application from the time we applied and to what later became the actual address from the lease or.
Mr. Alred, what did you say the suite is now? What's the suite number you're going into now?
It's right in the corner. I don't know the exact suite number, it's right beside the nail place. I'm sorry, but I didn't come by on the way in, and my partner has got it, he's done switched them to the corner, if I'm not mistaken. I'm sorry that I can't pinpoint it, but it's within, the original number is either this side or this side. I don't know which one, but it's one of those. It's within 10 foot of the original address.
Kevin, since it's a conditional use permit, do we need the exact number? Because you're not putting it on the entire map.
That's right. I'm not sure where that 24 came from, but yes, we do. We normally ask for site plans with these, just as we did with the other, the other gaming operation that was approved for CUP a couple of months back. They did provide a site plan as to, kind of what their layout was going to be, and the exact suite number. We have 24, I'm not sure where that came from. Nasser, did you put that in?
Yeah, I went by and I thought it was 21, 30. I think it had 30 on it, but I mean, 30 wasn't right. And I started to impress it was 21, but it was 21. It sounded like they did actually have 24, and then I forgot what it was.
But that's not in the application that I see.
I'm looking at the application that was signed on March 16th by Mr. Larson, and that particularly says suite 030. And I may be the only one that sees that, but that's what I'm looking at as part of the evidence that's been presented to me.
In March, Mr. Alred, where was this the, in March, was this the one that you were in or looking to go in, or has it had changed since then?
We were looking to go in in February, yes, back in February. It was, or whenever it was submitted, that was, I'm sorry, but that is the location, and sadly, it's in that shopping center in the corner. I saw, I mean, you know, and I'm sorry, but my partner has switched the addresses, and I didn't really think, as long as we were in that shopping center, that it would matter which exact building. I'm sorry that I don't know, but.
Mayor, could we not move forward with a contingency for clarification on the exact suite number?
I think council could, if they so desire.
I think, to me, it sounds almost like a clerical, you know, and, you know, I don't know if it's on our end or their end.
And I am, I am working commissioners, too, to try to get it as quickly as I can as well, too, for clarification.
Mr. Bramlett?
Why is this a conditional use?
Because it's going through under the old system, before you changed the ordinance. This came in under the old ordinance. So, from now on, it would not be, but it's going through under the old one, because it was supplied for before the ordinance changed.
Got you, thank you.
Well, under, under the second one there, the required conditions and specifications, staff made a comment about the fire marshal, said there would be a change in fire code requirements, and we didn't have drawings for the interior renovation. Do we need that?
We don't, we don't have any site plans.
Is that something the fire marshal needs to? When can you get those to us?
It would probably not be tonight, unfortunately, but do you have an idea?
Is that something we have to have, or can we just, it's understood they have to get that?
It's not in yet, I mean, that's not mentioned.
It won't be tonight, no, sir, I'm sorry.
Can you have it here tomorrow?
I can.
We will.
We will, I will, yes.
Okay. Ironically, we have another meeting tomorrow night, the reason I asked, could you get it here tomorrow? Kevin, if they supply that and the address, exact location tomorrow, would you see any difficulty with us delaying this decision till tomorrow night?
No, that's entirely up to you. You have the public hearing scheduled for tonight, so I would recommend, as long as the continuance is done during the public hearing, I think you're fine, yeah.
All right. Council, you have any other questions right now for these gentlemen? I won't allow other people the opportunity to come up if they so desire. Anyone else care to speak for or against before we move forward? Hearing none, council, short decision. Would you like to continue the public hearing till tomorrow night at 6:00 and finish it at that time? It's totally your decision.
I suggest we do that. I think we owe it to our.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, second by Councilmember Townsley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we will hold the motion, the public hearing open till tomorrow night at 6:00, if you'll get that information to us tomorrow.
We will have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all you, is that all you need?
Kevin, anything else we need? If so, please let them know. Number four is an ordinance 1718 to annex tax record 31833. This, too, requires a public hearing. It is a voluntary annexation. It involves a piece of property off of 2427 that is actually a donut hole and is surrounded by other property that is already annexed into the city. Kevin, anyone else who would like to speak for or against, please come forward and be Kevin, would you be sworn, please? Actually, this is not a conditional use. You do not have to. No, you don't have to on this one, I'm sorry.
But you can swear if you want to.
Staff, too, so I'm not sure that's absolutely necessary, but yeah, okay. All right. Let's see. Okay, I think most of you are familiar with this, this time. This is the back portion of Gus Shad's JTD Associates property, tax parcel 31833. Roughly follows this line right here, and it is a, as the mayor mentioned, it is a donut hole in the city right now. City property, the old ballfields are right here, and there's some more city property that wraps around. This is shops at Olive Place over here, so city limits does completely go around this parcel.
Council, have any questions of Kevin?
And this is a requested annexation, and that is the only way we can do this.
Voluntary.
Voluntary petition, yeah. Not the only way, but the easiest way.
Easiest way.
Yeah.
I move approval of.
Anyone else care to speak for or against? Council, have any more questions for Kevin? Hearing none, it'd be in order to close the public hearing.
Move to close.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldridge to close the public hearing. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, it'd be in order to entertain a motion to pass ordinance 1718. Motion by Councilmember Bramlett.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number five is ordinance 1719, then consider a math amendment for the purpose of recording tax record 31833. We have to zone this property we just annexed. Council is recommending that we zone it GHBD.
Staff is.
Staff.
Staff is recommending.
Staff.
Okay. So moved that we, that ordinance 17?
No, 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 no. Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Hearing none, Kevin, you want to introduce it and make any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much to say about this. We do have a presentation we can present, if you'd like, but this is the same property we're talking about here. I have shown you the highlighted zoning map. The peach R20 that you see there highlighted is the property being annexed, and the R20 zoning, that's county zoning currently. So, you would see it consistently zoned, that pink GHBD color there. And Planning Board recommended unanimously for this zoning district. You'll see where the little cursor is right there. This is solidly in the future land use map to be commercial in the future. Possible it could be other things, but right now, I think predominantly that area is commercial, and this is consistent with that.
Any questions, council? Anyone else care to speak for or against? Hearing none, it'd be in order to pass a motion to. Close public hearing. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Under agenda adjustments.
Do we not need to pass?
Excuse me, need to pass 1719, excuse me.
Motion to pass 1719.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to pass ordinance 1719.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Now, under agenda adjustments. Number 12, I've talked to some of you, we had discussed possibly delaying the appointment to boards, and if council is agreeable with that, we would delay that to maybe tomorrow night and discuss that further. Number 13, where we have consider a subdivision, that is going to be removed, that has changed, that will not be considered at all. Number 17, we have a request from CFM Real Estate. This is the people that are developing the Pfeiffer Building. They have made a request of us to pay for some relocation of Windstream's wiring along Fourth Street. And rather than move forward that right now, I have reached out to Windstream and am waiting to hear something from them. Hopefully, I hear something by tomorrow night, but otherwise, we'll discuss that tomorrow night either way. But I would rather us not do that tonight, to give them an opportunity to get back to us. If council's in agreement with that, I would entertain a motion to do those three things.
So moved, sir.
Three or four. You're actually taking 3, 12, and 17 to tomorrow and completely removing 13, is that correct?
We're amending the agenda from the rest, from here out, so number three will actually be not in there at all.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Number, right.
Number 12, 13, and 17 will do the adjustment. And I have a motion by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion? Have a second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Under announced allegations, Mr. Chad Otwater, to make a request for the street closing for the July 4th parade in Forest Hills.
This is actually for my daughter, so thank you all for allowing us to do this, hopefully. I think this is the 14th, some discrepancy whether it's the 14th, 16th, or 17th, but it's been a long time. Tuesday, July 4th, closing the streets from 10 to 1. Actually, the parade will start at 11:00. Nothing's really changed, there's no food, there's no rifles. The only thing different that we're going to do as far as the announcement is social media and an ad in the Stanley News &amp; Press for the street closures. It's just with the paper and the trash we found over the years, that a lot of people don't pick it up, and it turns into litter, so we've decided to change that this year.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, under announced delegations, Father Jim Bernacki, Chair of the Coltrane Life Center Adult Daycare Initiative.
Good evening, Your Honor, Mr. City Manager, members of the council. We're glad to be here this afternoon. With me is Ms. Susan Cottle. Our group has been meeting regularly for about nine years, trying to establish an adult day healthcare center in Albemarle in Stanley County. And we've had some close nibbles but no bite so far, but I think we have a proposal that we're hoping that City Council will look favorably on. And actually, all of the second row and part of the third row here are members of our group that's been meeting all this time. Susan, who's our associate chair, is also the executive director of the Coltrane Life Center in Concord, where we hope to be a subsidiary or a branch of. And Susan, you want to share a few things?
Coltrane Life Center is an adult day healthcare program, and as Father Jim said, we're looking to make this a branch of that facility. That program has operated since 1974 in Concord, but we definitely need these services here in Stanley County. Our population is aging, and there's a great need for this level of care. So, thank you for listening to us this evening.
What we would like to ask the City Council to do is to consider enabling us to purchase with the proper zoning, a piece of property on the, at the intersection of Rebel Road and the Northeast Connector. There's a triangular piece of land there. We've spoken to Kevin Robinson and his associate, Nasser, about this, and they suggested that we contact the City Council and ask if you could make the proper zoning arrangements to allow us to be able to purchase this property for establishing an adult day healthcare center.
Well, it's, the property you're looking at is in a Northeast Connector overlay district.
That's correct.
Which requires 200 foot from the center line, the restrictions on the overlay district. You will be further than 200 foot from the center line, were you not just looking at the property on the map?
That's correct.
See, that will not come into play, the overlay district at all, correct? And your entrances and all will be on Rebel Road?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Council, this is a little bit unusual, so go ahead and answer your, ask your questions, but normally, this will have to go back through the planning and zoning. So, they're just asking our concerns at this point. We will not give them an approval, because it has to go through Kevin's committee. Am I right, Kevin?
Yeah, I could jump in, bro.
Sure?
Thank you. Yeah, okay, so what we've got here is, this is in the overlay district. I don't know exactly, I haven't seen the site plan yet, if it's going to be in that 200 feet. I think what's written in there is if it intersects that 200 feet, it has to apply. There are a couple of different things that will kind of apply to the whole property there, but apart from the design-related things, the overlay district specifies that uses similar to those in R10 are allowed. This is zoned R10. Adult daycare centers are not allowed in R10 even by conditional use. Adult daycare centers are not allowed in R10 even by conditional use. They are allowed in R8. So, the question is really, there's two options here for the applicants. One being to rezone to R8, which, and then, and do it as a conditional use permit. You know, then you've got R8 in a largely lower-density, single-family residential district. You've got apartments that come in, you've got some other uses in there with the R8. I'm not sure it's in keeping with the intent of the overlay to rezone it. The other option, and it's a little bit more widespread, would be to explore the use of it as a conditional use permit being added into R10. It would really be adding four words onto the conditional use permit section. We have the same exact language in R8, allows for nursing homes, daycare centers, and adult daycare centers. And so, we would just be adding the adult daycare center onto it if a text amendment was proposed. So, that's the question in terms of policy guidance from Counsel. Rather than taking them down one path and having to turn around and go back the other way, we prefer to kind of know what you think would be the better route to go, so we can go ahead and get started with that.
Ms. Hall?
Just sounds like to me, by reading what you've proposed, what you've given to us and listening to you...
Mm-hmm.
That's the, and I don't like, I know, easy is not always the best, but the cleanest is to just go back and allow for adult daycare centers in R10.
Mm-hmm.
Is to give you all that instruction to do that. That's what it sounds like to me. Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
That would be staff's recommendation. I think it's the easier of the two.
And cleaner.
It's cleaner, and to be honest with you, I mean, I think it sounds like that's kind of the way the market's going when it comes to these things. They're looking for larger pieces of property, they're probably going to be in more suburban areas of town. I think when this was written, it was designed to go kind of infill in some downtown areas and everything, and that may not always be the case. You do it as a CUP, there is still some oversight there in terms of design and everything. And then, of course, with this particular property there in the overlay there, so there would be some design-related considerations already.
Follow-up? Just follow-up. So, walk me through, if we go through the proper channels to go to allow for adult daycare centers in R10, that happens, goes through the proper channels, and then they come back in and bring you the site, the mapping, because what they are proposing to do will then be allowed in that, is that correct?
Yeah, and that needs to go through, that actually has to go through, go through a design review anyway, but we would probably run this through concurrently. We would probably do a CUP and then also do the design review. It would probably be a little bit redundant in the process, but that would, we could probably accomplish that in one meeting.
Okay. I just needed to understand it succinctly.
There's a lot going on with that, when you add that, the requirements of that corridor into it, yeah.
Counsel, does anyone else have any concerns? We will not actually take a vote tonight. Counsel will actually take this through the process and bring it back to us for a formal vote later. But does anyone have any concerns with the way they have proposed this?
I have a question.
Sure.
Is this the same unit that was supposed to go into that building across from the YMCA?
Yes, sir. It is. We had an agreement with the YMCA, with a memorandum of understanding, to try to see we could retrofit that building. The Y was going to give us use of that building initially for seven years at a dollar a year rent, but it was our task to go ahead and retrofit it for an adult daycare center. We were given initial estimate of about $500,000 to do that. We put out some bids at the Y's insistence and came up with no local or area contractors wanting to bid for it, and an out-of-area contractor bid $700,000 as a minimum cost. It was $200,000 more than what you had wanted. So, we talked about that and prayed about it and decided that was not going to be good for us at that point.
Anyone else have a question?
Just a question. I'm assuming that the original plan and overlay and everything for the Northeast Connector was to limit access, limit driveways and roads.
Limit driveways, exactly.
Limit commercial and that kind of thing. Does any of this have any, endanger any of that?
Well, actually, the driveway will be on Rebel Road, as I understand it.
That's what I'm saying.
So, there is already a road that it would be on, and he is saying that they will be outside of the 200-foot overlay. If they do get in it, they'll have to meet all the overlay. So, hopefully, they will be outside of that.
Because that was the only thing that occurred to me, was limiting, you know, other commercial development on that, that's supposed to be a bypass.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Aldridge?
Just a question. If my memory serves me right, Rebel Road, a large majority of that's gravel. So, would your driveway be in the, I know there's a portion of it paved right off the Northeast Connector, so would your driveway be in the port, in the paved section or in the gravel section?
We think it would probably be in the paved section, and there's also a possibility down the line to reconnect Rebel Road with Ridge Street, which, it was originally connected with that, but...
It was.
That will be a further matter that maybe City Council and the Planning Board can talk about.
The requirements of our policy on the property is if they, whatever they buy, they will have to extend the road to their property line. So, if part of it is not paved, it would be their responsibility. But I'm like he says, I think most all of it is paved already. Got you. Thank you. Counsel, have any further questions?
Are we just then going to ask staff to move forward to R10, allowing for that in the ordinance?
Staff will then, Mr. Robinson, correct me if I say something wrong, you will now take a text amendment to the Planning Board and then also, at the same time, they're going to bring, do the conditional use, and you're going to try to run them close together? Okay. Counsel, have any problems? If not, that's what will occur. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, I have Stan Joseph, Waste Management, update on recycling. I don't believe I see Stan.
Stan has changed.
You have changed significantly, Stan.
Sorry about that. Stan had some person come up late, and so he asked me to fill in, and I was going to be here anyway, so. My name's Jeff Edwards, if some of you know me, but I want to give a quick update and then have any, if you have any questions, I can take those. Am I close enough?
Pull it up to you.
How's that? Better? So, next week, Wednesday and Thursday, we should start seeing the carts delivering to our facility in our old Charlotte Road here. The following week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, our vendor will be distributing the carts, putting them together, they've got to put the wheels on, distributing the carts to all the residences. They expect three days, actually, two days, and a third day in case there's any delays or anything like that. So, by the 28th, the Wednesday, they should all be delivered. Service starts on the 10th. There will be calendars on the carts. It was something that we, we wanted to get on there because the residents do get confused sometimes. So, there'll be calendars, and there'll be flyers with the carts that will be attached to it also.
Counsel, have any questions?
Do you think everybody knows?
Really, I don't. I think when a cart shows up in their yard, they're going to wonder what it is.
That's exactly right.
That's what I think's going to happen, and with the phone thing like the county does, we will, we actually need to hit, advertise, and after he delivers, we need to advertise heavily right then.
Yeah. There have been press releases out, and there will be one the week before, so hopefully they'll see that.
Counsel, have any further questions?
That easy?
What color are they?
Blue.
Sounds good.
They're blue.
They're blue.
They're blue.
But I don't know what shade. I'd see the color shade.
Doesn't matter.
I'm just joking.
Real blue.
Three-dimensional.
Thank you very much.
On the pickup, is it opposite weeks of your solid weight? I mean, well, let me back up. You pick up solid waste every week. It's on a different day, though, from solid waste, correct?
The rest of the weeks should be the same day as your solid waste, just every other week. Now, if you don't do that, they, that doesn't go over well. People don't want to put it out two different days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being easy on me. Tell Stan how easy it was.
Yeah, you do that. Thank you. Number nine, the monthly departmental reports are in your agenda. Anyone have any questions? Number 10, the municipal calendar is in your agenda. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I'd go back to the monthly reports. I like those, and our people do a very good job, I think, telling us what they've been doing and so forth. I read every one of them, so I appreciate it.
The one thing I didn't see, and I don't see the chief here, but I know why.
He's over there.
Not that chief, the other chief. And I may have jumped over it, I may have not read, but we have mutual aid agreement with the town in Norwood and other agencies, our fire department does. And the folks in Norwood were very, very, very appreciative of us taking and staffing the fire department down there upon the death of their employee. And I didn't see, and again, I may have just jumped over it, but it happened because Sean was on top of things, because Michael Ferris was on top of things, and we had folks that were willing to move for that week or that particular point in time. So, I, like I said, I didn't read it in there, and I may have read over it, but I don't remember seeing it. But I think that we've, you know, we need to capture that, and if in fact, and they do, the department reports go within the minutes of our meeting, I think that we need to capture that.
Number 11, second reading, fiscal year 1718, city bound my budget ordinance 1713. Mr. Ferentz has, going to pass out the budget ordinance?
Got a few things actually to pass out related to the budget. This is revised, and I'll explain why in a minute. As it's coming around, I'll make a couple of comments. At the last meeting, or at one of our recent meetings, one thing that's changed between first reading and second reading that's reflected in the budget is that Counsel had authorized $15,000 additional budgeted in Parks Recreation to cover the potential cost of the fans that will, blowers that will be needed in the Ewattel Center Gymnasium. Number two, there's also $15,000 appropriated in administration to cover possible election expense. And those are things that we'd already talked about, that Counsel had approved. The budget also reflects a new section, actually, if you look on page four of what you've been handed, there's a $3,491,325 figure. We're not appropriating any more money. What that is, is that is moving out of our operating budget into an insurance fund, the money we have budgeted, because the local government commission had said, set up a, thank you, Internal Service Fund as a way to handle that money. We did not want any questions about how we were accounting for the money or tracking the money, since we are essentially going self-insured, being we're an insurance company, so the Internal Service Fund is being set up to handle that money. So, it does not appropriate any more money than what we already had in the budget. That's just the mechanics of the way the local government commission has said to handle it, and by asking that question, I think we avoid any problems down the road. So, it's all new to us. In some ways, it didn't matter what, how it was set up, what mattered is we do it the right way, and that the auditor is going to find that appropriate, and the local government commission is going to find that appropriate. So, that is that change. And it's just, it's just a difference of how the money is shown. And then, I'm going to pass around another sheet addressing potential changes in state law regarding the use of Powell bill money. I don't know if the mayor wants to talk to that or not, but this, this sheet does explain that as well.
In the current proposed state budget from the House, there was a condition that we could not use Powell bill funds for any sidewalk that contained a utility pole, a fire hydrant, or mailbox, or any other fixture in the scene of the sidewalk. So, what this budget changes is we will no longer have any concrete funds in our Powell bill, in our Powell bill fund, and all the asphalt will come from the Powell bill, all the concrete will come from our general fund. It is not a change in net overall, it's just moving four line items to make sure, if that does stay in the state budget, that we are protected, because we do want to do some sidewalk improvements this year between Depot Street and Market Station, and then next year, we'll be doing some down around the Pfeiffer project. So, we've got to be able to use the funds, and this will protect us so we can do what we need to do and still be in compliance with the state law, if that's what gets passed. Ms. Hall?
Just clarification. So, right now, we can use Powell bill money for that, for concrete?
Yes.
Okay. And so, in the House bill, not the Senate, but the House bill, and help me again, Powell bill money only comes to towns and cities, isn't that right? It's just local municipal money?
It's based on your street frontage and the length, the miles of streets you have.
And some portion based on population.
But it's based on population.
But only to these counties.
It's not counties, it only goes to cities, and in the House bill, they're stripping our authority to be able to use that now, or mandating we can't use it for sidewalks.
Placing some, some conditions on where you can't use it.
Right, okay. Again, it doesn't change our, like you said, it doesn't change our net allocation, but what it does do, it's, it is the proposed House bill taking away local authority on how to use Powell bill money. Isn't that it?
Correct.
That's all I wanted to say.
Counsel, have any further questions?
I just appreciate us making this change now versus later, and if it doesn't pass, if it doesn't get...
We're good either way now.
That's right.
Last meeting, we talked about, and Michael just mentioned, the moving the $15,000 into a couple of different accounts. The only other thing I know of, right offhand, that is not in next year's budget, because we have no idea right now of how to predict it, is the auditorium upgrade at Central Auditorium. And we're in the process now, Owen is close to getting ready to send out his RFQs for that proposal, and we, we know it's going to be expensive, but there's no way to budget for it, because it's an unknown to us right now exactly what it's going to cost. That's the only thing I would know of going into the budget right now, that we'll just have to address later on from our general fund and fund balance. Does Counsel have any questions or concerns about the proposed budget? Hearing none. If you're prepared to move forward, it would be in order to do a motion to pass fiscal year 1718, ordinance 1713, on second reading. So moved. Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number 12 and 13, we have, 12 has been continued tomorrow night, 13 has been removed. Number 14 is considered ordinance 1721 to appropriate proceeds from the debt to purchase land for the Albemarle Corporate Center. If Counsel recalls, I think I sent you a message, LGC gave formal approval to this last week. Our plans are to close the loan next week, and at that time, the money will go into our general fund to make the payment on that land. This will set that up so we can make that payment and actually receive it in accordance with LGC and our budget auditor, so we have no issues. Mr. Ferris?
I just want to make one quick comment. For those of us that, you know, some of us were on the phone call with LGC, talking about the financing application, and during that phone call, there were several other jurisdictions around the state also requesting approval for financing for their various projects, and I just want to commend Mark Donham, he's worked on the project... He's worked on the project itself and the property and that transaction, but also Colleen Conroy, Finance Director, and Matt Smith, Assistant Finance Director, because we were the only jurisdiction on that phone call that did not have one question or comment about our application. You know, there were some, some questions going in. We got those things cleared up. We worked very hard, I think, to have everything in order and addressed and, you know, tied up in a bow, so that when the phone call took place, there were no questions, no concerns, and we were the only jurisdiction that was approved without question or comment. So I just want to commend everybody for their work on that.
Good job.
Because it's, it's not an easy process, even when things are going well. It's stressful, it's difficult, it's a lot of work, and I just wanted to say thank you and commend everybody for their work.
Further questions?
Move approval ordinance 1721.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, approve ordinance 1721.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 15, consider recommendation concerning architects for the police headquarters renovation project. You see in your agenda, comments by Mr. Ferris, several members of staff and myself toured some of the architects' buildings they had built in other locations last week, and Mr. Ferris is ready to make a recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, we're in the process of acquiring the old Home Savings Bank on South Street, West South Street is the location, is the future location for the police headquarters. In advance of that, trying to move things along as quickly as possible, I developed a request for proposal document that we sent to 24 architectural firms throughout the state that we were aware of. Those were based on some contacts we had received from architects through the years saying, if you go forward with any projects, please let us know. Also, based on some of the research we'd done ourselves, to find architectural firms that had recently designed and led police department projects in other jurisdictions throughout the state, and actually just some basic internet searching, trying to find architectural firms with relevant experience throughout the state. So we sent them to 24 firms, gave them some time to reply. We received eight proposals, which I think is a pretty good amount to return, especially if you're the one having to review them all. And so this team of the mayor, Chief Owen, Assistant Manager Christina Alphen, and myself, we reviewed them all. We got together, we narrowed down to two very qualified firms that were, I think, heads and shoulders to all of us above the rest. We then set up these visits to look at examples of their work. And after those visits, we were very impressed with, with both of them. But at this time, I think a group, it was unanimous that we move forward and recommend Creech Architecture. David Creech is the principal of the firm. That is an architectural firm that did the work for the city hall. So we have an experience with them. They have a great deal of experience in municipal buildings and specifically law enforcement buildings. We looked at some of their work on our visit last week. Of course, we're familiar with their work because of this building that we're in here. Also, very pleased and have good relationships with their staff, which is what really matters. John Crawford, their construction engineer, who actually now lives in Alamo Morl. So we are making that recommendation, and the way it would work from here, if counsel is okay with pursuing Creech, you cannot bid and accept solely on price. In fact, you can't ask price at this point. We have to decide who we are interested in progressing with. If counsel is okay with us progressing with Creech, we will then talk to them, negotiate their rates, and at some point, come back to counsel and say, feel like these rates are acceptable, let's execute a contract. If the rates turn out to be too high, and we just can't come to acceptable terms, we will then move on to number two, the second architect we reviewed. So it's not finalizing the architect, but it is giving us the authority to proceed and, with negotiations and drafting of a terms of agreement to eventually bring back to counsel.
So that's the motion, is the authority to move forward with an agreement?
Exactly.
Not to enter...
And I would think, just slightly, just kind of jumping ahead here, I think when we got to that point and wanted to make the recommendation, we would probably have Creech here, because not everybody has, has met them before, and they have not been before this entire board. It was a different configuration at that time. So that would be a, a good opportunity to meet and hear from them as well.
Further questions? I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve Creech in our feasibility study. Proposal to move forward and attempt to come up with an agreement and contract. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 16, consider a change order to construction contract with Terry's Plumbing and Utilities for the Leachade Pump Station and Force Main. Ms. Underwood, would you and Darren both come forward? Counsel has contacted me with several questions. After their presentation, these will be the two to ask those questions.
Good evening. We have a change order in front of you tonight for a project that hasn't broke ground yet. We understand that's a little concerning to you, and we're prepared to answer any questions that you have. It's a big project. It's been underway for four years. The design by our engineer was submitted, or started in 2015, and submitted to the state over 14 months ago. So it's been in the works for a long time. So unfortunately, since that time, since the, because of the solid waste funding, there was a pretty tight schedule for getting all that information in. And since then, there has been some reconsiderations of some items.
Counsel, have any questions?
Question. The items that are in this change order, they were not in the bid documents before, so the original, I mean, the others that bid on them didn't include these items?
Correct. The, the most expensive one, number one, for the steel casing, we knew we wanted to do an employee building. We didn't know at that time, when, when we had to get the plans into the state, if we were going to be able to do one, if we were going to get the funding, or have the funding for it, or exactly where we were going to site it. So at that time, we didn't include that line item for steel casing for the driveway, because we didn't know if there would be any overlap of the Force Main project, where it was going to go, and where, if we did a building, where it might go. But now that we know where we're going to go with the building and have started construction, the plans are to go, Force Main will be going in front of that building. So where there's driveway entrances, we need to put in steel casing. And that's the most expensive part of the, the change order.
We didn't know the number of driveways either, until we got the, the design back from the preliminary design, back from the architect.
That's my concern, to make sure that some of these items, the other groups that bid on and didn't include these, and they didn't, because, you know, initially, there was a big concern over this group being so much lower.
Go ahead and explain all the items to us, so the counsel will know.
Do you want to go ahead and explain? I'll let Darren, he's more articulate.
When Nina covered the steel casings, which, like she was saying at the time, we didn't have the, the building designs, nor did we know how many driveways that we were going to end up having to put in. So the engineer had already anticipated that we would have to add some of these. So he actually went back and negotiated with the contractor for a lower unit price for the steel casing. So when you, we would have, have to add some, we just weren't sure of how many. So he couldn't include that in the preliminary plans sent to the state, when we didn't know their locations and such. Item number two was a sampling port, and that's something that we didn't know that we were going to have to have until we got into discussion with the utilities, with the wastewater treatment plant, and for the pre-treatment permit. So we didn't know that we were going to need it until we got into the pre-treatment permit, and then we found out that that would be a good idea to add that, to, to help the... Yes, ma'am?
Just a question, Mayor?
Sure.
That's our wastewater treatment plant, right? That was in-house questioning that we didn't realize needed. Is that right?
Yeah, until we, we got the permit.
Right. So when did we let this contract? When did we let this bid? I mean, when did we award the, the bid that we're now doing a change order to?
Last month, I think.
When was it?
It's been a couple of months.
When was it? So if we're in June, when did we give this bid out?
May was when the, May the 10th, I think, was when it was let, when the...
Yeah, but when did we award the bid? Was that in February, when I wasn't here?
I think it was, yes.
February 6th.
So I knew it was a while back?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
The, the sampling port, and it's required by Public Utilities, is that ours or the state?
Ours.
Ours. Okay. And how come? I don't understand how we got this far, and we got two entities here working together that we didn't know. Who didn't know it at the time, I guess, is the question, that you need the sampling port?
Well, we were having discussions as far as the permit, and, so that was part of the permit. And once we learned it was part of the permit, because we went back and forth on several draft permits, and we talked to the engineer, and they determined the best location. And utilities was very helpful in giving examples of what type of port and all we would need, which that's, you know, that's $250, so it's a very small amount to add that, and it's the, you know, it's a requirement on their part for the state. So, you know, it was the right thing to do and the, the right time to add it, instead of waiting until everything was done and then pay upfront, or pay additional, way more than $250 to add it later, you know, so...
Continue, Ron.
All right. The next one, number three and four, something also that we had gone back and forth on discussing the times that the pumps will be running, because this isn't going to be a continual cycle. The pumps won't run, you know, day in and day out. So we had discussed that with the wastewater treatment plant. And so we discussed the fact that, you know, we needed to add a port in case, there's, there's no guarantee there will be, but in case that liquid stays in that line and becomes stagnant, you know how stagnant water will smell on its own, that we would add a port to it to be able to inject oxygen for there for odor control, if it was needed. We don't even know that it's going to be necessary. Again, it was just the right time to do it now, as opposed to trying to fit it in down the road and paying, paying more money at that time, so...
Continue.
All right. Item number five was the lining of the manholes. And again, this is to help control odors, you know, from the, since those pumps aren't going to be running all the time. And like, right now, we're talking about running it, running the pumps at night, and also help better protect those manholes for longevity. You know, the, we just, we just felt that that was the right thing to do with, after talking to utilities and wastewater and all, to, again, since those pumps aren't going to be running continually, that liquid could become stagnant, and, you know, that's a better way to help with odor control and to keep that liquid from just sitting in those manholes, you know, without some lining in there.
Explain number four, please, sir.
That was part of...
It's the additional above-ground footage?
Yes, sir. We had to do that, to add that sampling port and the, the connection port, to be able to add for if we wanted to inject oxygen in the future. It had to extend that, that section of piping out, so they had to extend the, the footing out for the whole pump station.
Counsel, have any further questions?
Have we actually started construction on this?
No, sir. I, I talked to the engineer, I've talked to him several times each week, and they've been, you know, contacting Terry several times a week. And my understanding, the last I had spoke with Terry personally, which is two weeks ago, he was waiting on his materials to come in, so he wanted to start getting his materials delivered on the site before he actually broke ground, so...
Only thing I'd like to say is, just because we have $270-some thousand in contingency, that does not mean we have to spend it.
Yes, sir.
I hate change orders.
Just for clarification, when we say, when you say that we don't know, we didn't know that we needed these certain things. The engineer, this was not their first rodeo. Are these items not standardized on the other projects that they've done across the state?
Now, my understanding, each wastewater treatment plan is, is different. So they each have a different permit, you know, they negotiate with their, their users, industrial permits and such as that. And, you know, utilities could speak better on that section of it than I could, so, you know. Some of them do sampling themselves, some landfills that have force mains. You know, we chose to do that through the treatment plant that way, because that's, that's what they do all the time. So we tried to add that as a, as a sampling location for them to, to help make sure that we're meeting the requirements of our permit, if that makes sense.
You entertain a motion.
Are you confident at this time, there are no more change orders that were going to be coming to us? I know we haven't even started, but is there anything else out there that you know of right now that's going to be coming to us?
No, sir. And the engineer was very honest, and Brent wanted me to share this with you guys, like these driveway crossings and such. You know, he said to make sure to, to let you know that one of them, like Nina said, because of the length of time we had to originally get the plans in, one of those casings, you know, was just simply missed. And it's in an area that, you know, where, where traffic is going back and forth at MSW, and in, in some ways, you would never need it, because you're not going to be cutting into that road anyway. It's already, the road's already there. But the more that, you know, Brent and I discussed it and said, well, you just never know. I've had too many situations, and it's just that prevention. So that, that casing, for example, was something, we said, well, let's just go ahead and add it. Now's the time to add it, because down the road, you know, if somebody goes excavating in there for whatever reason, you would be protected, that line in there. And I've just, you know, that was one that, he said, you know, we should have just suggested that to start with. He said, but, you know, it was in a protected area already. But more, like I said, the more we talked about it and said, let's just, let's stick it in there. Now's the time to do it, because then, 20 years down the road, somebody does a road cut in that area, right there at the edge of the landfill, for whatever reason, that line's protected. So that's, you know, that was, he wanted me to share that with you guys, and so it's just one that, that, you know, he simply missed.
Counsel, have any more questions? Just a comment. We all said it when we awarded the bid, that they were low. I hope this is not the beginning of something that allows them to catch up and pass some of the other people. And looking at this, a lot of questions still need to be asked before we even break ground and make sure we're, we're dotting all of our i's and crossing all of our t's. Now's the time to do it versus, yeah, we, we are a little disenchanted with, not a little, but a lot, with change orders coming in. But we're blindsided, and we have no choice. And we're spending taxpayer money, and yes, it's got to be done, but, yeah, be it with the engineer or whatever, let's just question, 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 and even with our own departments. Good communication is the lifeblood of moving things forward and eliminating mistakes. Further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Bramble.
Sir.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 17 has been moved to tomorrow night. Number 18 is to consider a resolution to provide for a cost of living adjustment. This is included in the budget, and we need to pass the resolution so counsel can begin to work on the personnel actions before time to implement it.
I think the date, Mayor, if I read that right, the second or third paragraph has July 3rd, 2016. I think that should be 2017. Is that correct?
All right, and which part are you...
In the resolution, I'm sorry, in the resolution?
In the resolution.
Oh, Martha. More than I predicted. Reading, baby. Catching those dates like me. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, thank you.
Did you catch any further errors? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion with that correction.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 19, consider resolution adopting the water and sewer rates for fiscal year 1718.
So moved, as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And regarding our rates, if you remember, we put money in this year to do a study of water and sewer rates and we'll have some kind of recommendation back before next year. Number 20, consider resolution adopting electric service rates for fiscal year 1718. And I might add, there is no general overall increase as council decided to maintain the same rates, but we do have to adopt your rate schedule. Move to approve. Motion by Councilmember Aldrich.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion?
I only have one question.
Yes, sir.
It looked, when the county proposed, made its changes in electric rates and all of that, they, they said they were basing it on increases from the, from the city.
Water and sewer.
Water, right.
Only water.
It's water. They do not sell electricity.
Okay, okay.
But yes, you're right. They, they do get a rate increase from us, just like all of our citizens do.
Yes.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 22, consider bids to supply bulk chemicals for water and wastewater treatment plants. Mr. Leonis?
21.
Ah, sorry, sorry. Number 21. Well, Mr. Leonis, I was fixing to ask you to come on up, so you might as well come on up.
I will, sir.
21, consider revisions to the customer service policy for Public Utilities. There are a lot of changes in here. I would encourage you to, listen to Mr. Leonis, look through his summary or overview and ask all the questions you need.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Counsel. As I, as you have in your packets at the May 15th meeting, each of you were given a hard copy of the customer service policy, tried to provide some overview of the various changes that we made in the policy. This was a long effort by not only the Utilities Department, members of the Utilities Department Administration, but also by our customer service staff and our finance staff, because all of us are kind of involved in delivering that service to our customers. Again, generally, this was taking revisions to various changes in some of the statutes which, as they relate to providing water and sewer service to our customers, as well as some changes in credit reporting, some clarifications in how we handle issues and, and refunds and establishing service and such. It's quite extensive. It's been a while since we've gone over something that large in that scope and it did take us quite a while, but I think what we have before, before you tonight for your consideration is pretty comprehensive. And we took some stuff out that really didn't make sense to be in there, such as the technical requirements for our electrical service. So with that, I can answer any questions.
I noticed that most of what you're saying, you're clarifying, and to me, that implies clarifying and not changing the substance of it. Is that the case here?
In many cases, yes, sir. A lot of it was, um, we did not change substance, because we did look at a lot of what our, what our current policies is comparing with some of our colleagues and such, the various cities. Tanner, if you remember him, he was all the time calling and checking with other utilities as to how we handled, how they handled things and we found that they'd be, we found us to be fairly consistent. So at that point, we didn't make major overhaul changes, but something that was more clarity to both our customer service staff as well as our customers.
Mr. Mayor, one thing, here again, I don't feel like I'm totally new at this, but I am in some areas. If we approve this and it turns out that we start getting a lot of complaints in a certain area in here, that it may be causing trouble with our, with our public, can we go back and change what element of that?
You also can amend it anytime.
I'm okay then.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we've amended this several times, this.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Leonis, tell me just a minute, did you change anything on extensions, credits, all of that, just like it has been?
We've pretty, the only thing that we did make a change in is the, a waiver for the reconnect fee, uh, when we do have a reconnection. You know, we waive, we provide a waiver for the late fee, but we provided now a waiver for the reconnection fee. With respect to the extensions, I think we went to four times, a maximum of four in a given year.
Explain when somebody would qualify for a waiver.
Somebody would qualify for an extension would be if they have, they're late paying their bill and they need an extension to pay their bill after the cutoff date. And that's when we would provide them that kind of, of consideration.
And when, explain the waiver.
The waiver would be, we waiver, once a year, we will waiver the, or waive the reconnect, the late fee and the reconnection fee.
Is that a change? I mean, we've had some of that.
We've had that. The one was the waiver of the reconnection fee.
You said this was extensive, so to your, your staff, is everybody on board with this? You're going to have a training session, you're going to have something out in front of them, so when the question, the, the call comes in, that everybody's on the same page, on the same paragraph?
In those meetings, it was, the entire customer service staff was in there. One of the things was trying to get all of the customer service staff in the meeting and so that usually meant we could meet for about 45 minutes on some mornings to, in order to support opening customer service by 8:30. So to answer your question, all of the customer service staff was involved in the development of this. We do have another customer service rep, a new one, and Scott will be working with her to make sure she understands the policy.
Is, is this medical alert program, is that something new or we always have had?
We have always had that, sir.
Define pool in a box.
Pool in a box would be going to the Kmart, Walmart, Costco, whatever, in those pools in a box that are three, maybe four feet deep that, you know, put out in your yard and, you know, are usually, you know, they're, they, we've had some people inquire about the sewer credit for that, since, you know, that water, it is, when we found out, we only found one town that actually provides that credit and that would be Norwood. There are other towns provide that credit, but then they usually attach a service charge to that to cover, because somebody has to go out and measure the pools, see what, calculate the volume and then try to figure out what the credit would be.
You're basically talking blow-up pools, then.
Blow-up pools and those pools that are in the, uh, like I said, I want to say they're, oh, probably 10, maybe 12 feet in diameter and about three feet, you know, they're kind of...
Above ground.
Above ground. Above ground pool, that's 20,000 cubic feet, included or not included. I'm talking about you go to a pool store and buy the big ones, it has, somebody has to come up and set up.
20,000, they, there would not be a pool to that size, that 20,000 cubic feet. Probably what we've seen is, um, 4,000 gallons, maybe.
Okay.
Uh, we're not, typically when you get to a pool of that size, there are going to be an in-ground pool. I think the one gentleman we talked about before, I think when we looked at that, just kind of the figuring of it, it was probably about 6,000 gallons, 7,000 gallons.
Reason I ask, we had one just last year that was a little over 18,000 gallons. We told them no. I'm asking, that's what I'm asking. Now, if it comes back, does it apply?
At this time, no.
It does not apply.
Does not apply.
For the sewage credit.
For the sewage credit. And the reason...
You're basically saying anything above ground doesn't qualify for a sewage credit.
Unless they come in and fill it either by an above, you know, they purchased the bulk water, which is an option for them to do, and they can also purchase a hydrant tap, which is another option. With that one individual, he was, the hydrant tap, I understand the hydrant was too far from him, but he still did have a bulk water availability and it would have been cheaper for him to fill it by bulk water.
Further questions, Counsel?
On extensions, I've seen where it's mainly for residential only, unless I overlooked it, do we have something in here, how, how commercial accounts might be handled?
We do not provide that kind of extension to our commercial accounts. We work with them on a one-by-one basis if there's an issue. The majority of our customer accounts are in the residential area. We have not really had any major issues with or requests for extensions or such from our commercial and industrial accounts. I know there have been some instances, but they, compared to the volume, you know, compared to the percentage or the, the occurrence in our commercial accounts versus what they would be in our residential accounts, we didn't see the need to move forward with something like that.
Further questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry to approve the customer service policy.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Leonis, stay there.
Yes, sir.
Number 22, consider bids to supply bulk chemicals for water and wastewater treatment I'm sure my chemical man on the end has to have some questions.
No, sir, I am all for this.
You're moving to approve it?
I, I, I have, I have nothing caustic to say about this.
Other than the, other than the cost of the caustic.
25.7% increase.
Has made the mouth go. I will, you know, we talked just a little earlier about water and sewer rates, we had an increase, uh, just what Mr. Leonis had in memo. Caustic alone is going up 25% this year. So that's the reason we have increases every year, is the cost of the chemical as much as any. And I, do I have a motion by Mr. Bramlett? Was that a motion to approve? Motion by Councilmember Bramlett to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion?
I'm going to ask which one of these we use the most of.
Sir, uh, the alum. The alum would be the one we use the most of.
I was hoping it wasn't the caustic, it's 25%.
Well, this followed by the caustic, but the alum is by far what we use the most.
I would have thought chlorine would be the best.
Chlorine is pretty, we'll probably use, uh, I, I had the numbers, I couldn't, I can't remember off the top. Chlorine's actually about third or fourth in that. Yes, sir.
Further questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Number 23 is consider approval of Saturday, December the 9th, at 10:30 a.m. for the Christmas parade. Our staff and ADDC representatives have surveyed all of the businesses downtown and they have either requested it or said they didn't have a preference because they were not open, but we had no negative comments at all.
I think this is great.
I do, too. Make a big day out of it.
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion?
I, I'm going to vote no, because I still think that's too late in the year for this sort of thing. Christmas starts at Thanksgiving and, and for the, you know, really, we don't have many merchants downtown anymore. The reason you don't get any complaints is there aren't anybody downtown selling anything. And, and it starts jewelry store, we do, and it starts Thanksgiving. So I've just, I just wanted to put that up.
To that end, I will say, at least it's earlier, even though it's not at Thanksgiving, it is earlier this date is than it was this past year, because this past year it was the second Monday. So maybe we'll get it up another week or something.
And it all depends on availability of floats and conflict with other parades, because the floats have already been spoken for. So they, they have to work around the other dates to try to get the floats.
Impressive. Maybe they can work earlier next year and...
And that Christmas open house is earlier.
Yes, the open house is before Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. One against, you got that? Okay. Number 24, consider bids for surplus scrap metal disposal. From the Public Utilities Department, there's a list in there. Counsel, have any questions? Mr. Leonis would be glad to answer them. Motion by Councilmember Hall to accept the bids for surplus scrap.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 25, consider acceptance of the 2017 Community Waste Reduction and Recycling Grant. And your memo is, uh, a recommendation from Ms. Underwood, I think it's $14,000 roughly, and we will budget the rest of it in our upcoming budget year to match and build that facility.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 26, approval, consider approval of the write-off for the public housing tenant accounts.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? I'd add, just because we're writing it off, it's required by law, we do not stop trying to collect those. We do, and we enter them in a computer system, by understanding Cedric, so if anyone goes to another public housing, they have to satisfy our liens and our, what they owe us before they can get into another public housing.
Do we know, know how many individuals that was, that amount?
Your list is in the, you have a list in the agenda. I'll stop just a minute and give you a chance to look at it, if you have a question.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10.
And the amounts that they each owe are also listed. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 27, consider adoption of the resolution to support to add streets to the STI. You'll see in the resolution that Mr. Ferris drew up, that is to add the expansion of Henson Street over to 52 and to also link Leonard Avenue to Henson Street via a new road that will go through our corporate center and also relieve congestion from the Walmart Olive Place area. Move to approve. Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Mr. Ferris, you want to add anything before we go?
That's a good resolution.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. That's exactly what I was going to say. Excellent resolution.
Right resolution.
When I, when I talked to Dana about that, we mentioned getting a map. Is there a map that's going to go with this?
I sent the resolution and a map to Dana and to Ruben Crumey.
Okay.
And had a conversation with them and told them what the plan was and if any comments, let me know. And I didn't hear anything back, so.
I just wanted to make sure they got them out.
Yes. And then they're, they're approximate rough drawings, but it gives you an idea of what we're asking for.
So they had the draft copies and this will give them the formal copies tomorrow. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 28, consider a resolution to support the fair application of property taxes. If you will remember when, how, when the CHS took over our hospital, we lost the taxes on several buildings, which are actually for-profit buildings that the hospital owns. So we do not feel that that falls under the state law for nonprofits, so we are asking the state to reconsider that. And that actually started as an authority in Charlotte and kind of continued forward as Carolina Healthcare has bought all of these different locations. So we're asking the state just to review that. It is not only us that's asking for that. I understand the county commissioners, county managers and county commissioners associations are also asking the state to look at this. So this just is a resolution that we can send to our representative and senator for support.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion?
That's another good one. Another good one.
I applaud our mayor for moving forward that, because we did talk about it and we[1774.04]
I applaud our mayor for moving forward that because we did talk about it and we were not real happy. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Michael put the time in to getting all the information together.
Thank you, Michael.
I remember mentioning it to Michael one time and he said, don't talk about that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 29, we, uh, this is discussion of polling locations within the city. As you may have heard, the Board of Elections has agreed to limit the number of precincts throughout the county and they are now trying to determine the exact polling locations. Council has had a little bit of a preliminary discussion and we requested four basic locations and that was informal. They now want this formally in writing and they want us to add a little bit to the memo. We'll, we'll go over that. If I miss it, Ms. Hall, jump in because she attended the last one for us. Four locations that council has requested was Market Station for the west side, our Fire Station Number Three for the north side, Waddell Center for the south side, and the Niven Center for the east side. Each of those basically go with our districts for council representation. The Board of Election has looked at those and has asked us about some issues that they want to make sure will not be a problem as we move forward. And the first one we'll talk about is Fire Station Three. You remember, we had some discussion about that, that there were some issues with the fire trucks in the bays. They wanted some assurance from us that for those roughly 14-hour days, two, two days every other year, we will move those trucks out to the entrance road that goes into Morehead Park. I personally don't see any issue just moving those trucks out there and clearing the parking lot for them to use the parking lot. Because if they do this, that precinct is going to grow significantly. So they're gonna need all of that parking and our employees and our fire trucks will have to park along the road going into Morehead Park. Does council see any issues with that? Or are you okay with us including that in a letter and letting them know we will agree to that if they continue to use this location to vote?
How many precincts do we have now?
They're, right now, we're, so there are seven. They're gonna go down to four. Actually, we didn't support, and I, and I, the letter we're gonna send in if council is so agreeable, we prefer to stay like we are. But if they are gonna go down to four like they've already voted to do, we need to ask for the right polling locations because we don't want them in locations where it's gonna be tough and difficult for people to get into.
So senior center voting?
Senior center will not have any voting. If they follow their, their recommendations, their recommendations included a community college. And personally, I think community college is not a good location for all the people on the west side to go to community college. There was talk about churches. There was talk about several different facilities, but the best one, in my opinion, for the north is still Fire Station Three.
Did they, sorry, mayor, didn't mean to interrupt, but, and I may have asked you this before, so I apologize, but did they not talk about the, uh, station on Bethany Road as a possible polling location in that district? But I don't know that'd be any better.
That has not been discussed at all because they moved from that several years ago.
Right, they did.
The, uh, that was a concern at Fire Station Three. The Market Station basically is, is nothing we can really do about that. There's not a good location in District Two for voting and we didn't want to send everyone to the college. So that, we asked them to stay at Market Station, which is actually about 50 foot outside of the District Two, but it works and they've used it all these years. That seems to be the logical place to remain. Ms. Hall?
Just some background information, what they've tried to do in determining, taking it from 20 plus down to 14, 16?
Fifteen, I think.
Fifteen in the county is that they have reallocated folks into, into precincts where they have about the same number of potential voters, okay? And then what they've done is when they've redrawn these lines, and there's been a lot of discussion, been a lot of people at some of the meetings. The past meeting last week, there were three people there to observe, two people from Baton and me. But with the four things that they've looked at, and this is coming down from the state, is once they draw those lines based on voters out there, they look at a central location within that circle, if you will, a central location spot, and then wherever that spot or building is, the space availability, the parking, and then, you know, ADA accessibility. And it was interesting because there's some, there are some places in the county, when you think about it, whether it be Almond or Rodnow or way out in the, out in the county, there's, they don't have a lot of opportunities. Now, there is a, I think it is, I think it's a statute, Ronnie, that if there is a public building that meets those qualifiers, and then there is a private building, for instance, a church, churches can decide if they will allow signs and those kinds of things out there, okay? If there is a public building available, then they gotta use that public building versus even going to that church because the church can make the decision if they're going to allow the signs and that kind of thing. There's been, it's been a long drawn-out process, it was just taken about six months.
Yeah, it's been a long, long, long process. We, they've had a lot of meetings.
They sure have.
And they have taken the one vote so far to reduce the number of precincts, but they have not decided on the location.
But back to Fire Station Three, the one thing they really want us, if, and that's where we want to keep that polling place, is they really want that verbiage coming from us. And if the fire chief were here, our understanding with him, that, that would happen. They didn't want it to get to the 13th hour and say, well, you gotta move those trucks. No, we don't, that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, they have not been very good at communicating with us because you said they've had the ability to pick public facilities, but I don't think they've quite gone about it the right way.
Right, right.
Will it be parked on the pavement or on the shoulder?
It would be the shoulder.
With, is there any, I don't know that ground, any problem if it's raining really bad?
That's pretty solid ground either. And we're not, only looking at two days over two years, unless there's a runoff some year.
Right.
I don't see that really being a big issue if we just let them know upfront that we can do it and let our employees know upfront that they need to do that and then agree to it.
One thing I did ask them at the last meeting though, I, I told them, I said, you know, you just got two of the 10 municipalities represented here. I asked them to send the proposed voting places across the county to the, to all of the municipalities. That would, that would be affected. Mainly because some people don't have the time and energy to go sit and, and talk about. I mean, the mayor has gone numerous times representing us and there are other towns that might not even know where they're gonna be told to go vote. So hopefully those letters will be going out from them too.
The South Side Waddell Center, I think is by far the best location for that community. Now, it will bring all of the people from south of Main Street and along Anderson Grove to the Waddell Center now, since they're eliminating some of the precincts. Everybody from that side of town will come to the Waddell Center to vote now. And the last location, which would basically be everything from Fifth Street all the way over to just 740? Isn't the breaking line 740?
District Three.
On District One?
District Four.
District Four.
Yeah. I think 740. All of that would, we're requesting them to consider the Niven Center rather than the middle school. The middle school has been wanting them to move for years and I can understand. That's not a good, secure location when you've got students. You, you need to protect the students. So we've offered the Niven Center and they're going to visit that this week with Mr. Ferris and see, because we got an ideal location in the back, back there for voting.
Yeah, we'll work that out.
Is council agreeable that we send them a letter with these conditions? Number first though, we, we send them a letter saying we prefer it to stay like it is with no changes at all. But if you're going to go forward with these changes, these are the four locations we want you to use and we would honor the request that you made.
So the Niven Center, how will it impact the nutrition site?
It should not because we would actually use the part in the back.
We're, we're going to meet, as the mayor said, this week. Lisa will be there as well. We're gonna walk the property and make sure they're aware of the traffic coming in and out at noon. And, you know, we also have to be able to keep our operations going and, you know, they, they're generally aware of what happens over there. They didn't think there'd be any problems, but we're gonna do a site visit. And if they're comfortable with it, we can make it work.
And that's a better facility than the middle school, what they, in their opinion?
You're gonna increase so many by going to the middle school? This middle school would really love to not have them there when they're, when they're in class. And you're gonna increase, these precincts are gonna increase considerably when you go from seven to four. So that's a lot more people coming to those locations to vote.
I hope, I, I would suggest a, an element to your response, that it is our desire and our hope that it does not result in fewer people voting. That there is nothing in this plan that would cause, that would by some, by some device or what have you, cause fewer people to vote.
And all of this is really up in the air because number one, the Board of Elections changes next month.
I understand.
And they may, they may decide not to move forward with all the discussion that we've had now. I understand in reading the paper, and Leon might correct me, I'm not sure that the county is even funding these changes in their budget, from what I read. Is that true, Leon, that county manager did not fund the request to make all these changes?
By best of my knowledge, he put it in contingency, so it's there, they do. And then if they don't make all these changes, it's in contingency.
Okay, thank you. If council is good with that, I would entertain a motion that we proceed with that letter.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge. Second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
So just, the senior center's going away or proposed. What are the other ones that are not, that don't, we wouldn't use anymore?
Commons.
The Commons would not be used now. I would, let me, let me clarify that. The early voting would still be at the Commons and we do want to add that to our letter.
Yes, yes.
Is everyone?
Yes.
Ms. Hughes?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Aldridge, you make a motion?
Absolutely.
Mr. Bramlett, second. You're good with that and everybody's good with that. So we'll make sure that's in the letter also.
So the senior center, the commons?
Senior center, the commons. And right now, we've got a very few people that vote at South Side Fire Department. And they're basically the ones that live in Crystal Village. So that really is, you have to go there too?
I did the first year. Now, if the, if the...
Okay. They've always thought they wanted to change that because they, they usually have. I think last election, they had 14 people vote down there in the city elections.
It was very limited.
Okay, thank you.
Have we taken that, did we take that though?
Yes, we, we voted.
Now, just, just FYI, so their next meeting of the Board of Elections, just FYI, would be if they were on their regular term, would be on July 5th, July 4th. But they're not meeting even the next day on the 5th. They're gonna do their next meeting and their mandatory organizational meeting the same day, on July 18th. And at that time, I'm not sure if that will be a three-member board or if at that time it will be a four-member board, so. Thank you.
Number 30, quarterly year business report, February to May. I think Mr. Robinson would like for that.
You do tomorrow night, I see that's, that's...
Would like to bring that to us later. He's, he's actually had a pretty tough schedule lately and he needs a little bit more time to get a couple of those together because a couple of them he's not heard from yet. Okay. Number 31, report on sale of surplus property. You need, you need action on that?
What are we doing with the 160 bales of hay?
Sorry?
Feed it to the horses. What are we doing with the 160 bales of hay?
We actually bale and sell the hay off of the area up around Tucker Town. And I guess we still do it at Landfield, do we not? Or do we still do it at Landfield?
Not Landfield.
We don't do it at Landfield anymore, but we...
Wastewater.
We, we, wastewater plant, okay.
Gotcha. I thought we were buying it for our horses.
No, we're, we actually sell it.
Yeah, tomorrow's gonna be long.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that? No votes required. Number 32, consider rescheduling to Monday, September 4th, our regular meeting due to the Labor Day holiday. Normally, we usually go to the next day, Tuesday.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Let me just point out, that'll put us also back on our seven o'clock schedule unless council decides to make some change, permit or extend the temporary arrangement.
Coming around the table, I'll just say upfront, we want to say thank you to several of our employees. It's been a rough last month with a lot of electrical outages due to cars hitting poles, a very bad water leak. We had a water crew and police officers that was up on 52 for like 15 hours straight.
Wow.
Also on Memorial Day weekend, so it was a tough, tough time for a leak, especially when you have people out of town there. But they managed to do it. They got it back going fairly quickly by bypassing the large line and got water back to everybody. So want to say thank you to all the employees that had a rough last month. But we were, we appreciate it and I'm sure the citizens appreciate it. Mr. Ferris?
I'd like to call on Chief Bowen. He has one quick item to bounce off of council and hopefully get their approval on.
Give these out right quick.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Um, thank you, Mr. Ferris, members of council, Mr. Mayor. Last year in June, the FBI contacted our department and they had a, a human remains detection canine that they wanted to donate to us because they had identified one of our officers, Matt Flanagan, to be the handler for that dog due to some training that they had went to and met Officer Flanagan. In July, the FBI gave us the canine. He's been with Officer Flanagan for the last year. We've used it a couple of times, going over to Charlotte Mecklenburg to help with some cases. Other than that, we haven't used the canine. Officer Flanagan's leaving our department. Matter of fact, yesterday was his last day with our department. I've contacted the FBI to see what the options are, what they would like us to do with the canine. They have recommended that we donate it to the Maryland State Police. They have officers there that are trained in handling that type canine and would ask us to donate it to them. I just wanted to come to you and ask you for your permission to do that. Be glad to answer any of your questions.
A dog is actually considered property, so we have to do this and council has to formally approve that.
If we, if we approve this, how's the dog get back there? Do we, do we drive it there? They come get it?
The Maryland State Police have already contacted me and said that they would come down and pick up the canine.
I move that we.
Grant permission.
Give the property, grant permission.
Give that property.
Give it to the mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion?
Give that dog.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Skylar, Sandra Skylar.
Okay. Mr. Townsend?
I'd just like to stand, congratulations to all our 2017 graduates in the city and the county.
Ms. Hughes?
Um, I'd also like to reiterate what the mayor had said about the city employees. I know the day the water started not coming out of my faucet, it was not good, but, and it was a holiday weekend, so I do appreciate everybody's effort for handling that. I also want to commend, I think Christina on all the work and the city employees that have done for the downtown, the streetscapes. I have received many positive comments on how everything is really starting to take shape with the flowers, pots hanging and the new recycling trash cans and the painting on the roads. And so I think it's really starting to take effect and people can start seeing the new banners are up. So I appreciate everybody's effort on doing that and I think it's really making our downtown shine.
Mr. Aldridge?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Hall?
The only thing I'd like to say is to utilities and to our customer service folks, one of the things that I think we take for granted sometimes until we get a call about it, is when an individual has a leak in their house and they don't realize they have a leak, until they get a call from... they get a call from a utility saying, "You need to go check something, you know, this is how much you've used." Just, we take that for granted, but it's something that our folks do, our staff, our people out in the field and people in the office take care of each other and take care of our citizens, so thanks very much for that.
Mr. Dry?
Did I miss Hughes? I think you guys have done a great job with the streetscape. I have one question, though. Up on Main Street, who keeps spinning out up there?
Yeah.
It's, how are we going to stop the black marks? That really, that's irritating.
I agree, very irritating.
And we, chief, let's put a camera up there and put a $1,000 fine or something on it, make that worth our while.
Put you up there.
I mean, that's terrible.
I agree. You never did that, did you?
Not anywhere that I couldn't do a doughnut and tear up grass.
Okay.
Brother, Mr. Dry?
I'm fine, thank you.
Mr. Whitley?
I just wanted, if the city had anyone that was involved in the General Main Saturday Night, or whenever it was, Saturday Night, I guess, that event was great, very well done, they sold out tickets, and it's the first time I'd gotten to go, it was either the second or third one they've done, but it was really good to see that many people downtown, especially out in the streets. The other thing is, I've gotten a couple of comments on the condition of the pavement on East Main Street. I don't know if anyone else gotten any calls or comments. I talked with Scott Basham at DOT, East Main Street is all DOT, so, you know, and he said it is not graded well, last time it was graded, but at this time, I don't think it's scheduled to be paved. So, if y'all want to relay those, if you get comments, if you want to relay them to me, I'll be glad to let him know it at RPO, that we're getting, you know, some comments.
We get numerous comments all the time, and you're exactly right, it is not, right now, even on their schedule for repaving.
Right. He said he would keep checking with the engineers since we were getting comments on it, so, you know.
If we complain enough, can we get it off?
If y'all bring it up, every time I go, I'll bring it up.
I think every time you tell us, you talk to them. It's what?
It's actually a social media conversation. Actually wasn't?
That does not surprise me. I've seen it more than one time.
Does that help any, Mayor, by having that, I mean, if it constantly is...
All we can do is request.
Okay.
Mr. Bramlett?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, I can continue to let him know that we're continuing to get complaints, so he can keep on...
Please. Mr. Bramlett?
Breathe easy, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to say.
Anyone in the audience have anything to bring before counsel? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168, 31811. One, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States. Three, to consult with the city attorney. Four, for economic development. And five, for real estate.
So moved.
So, motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?